Welcome, everybody, to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at six P. M. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would stand for that and remain standing for the invocation, we have Pastor Steve Holdaway here from Life Spring Church, one thirty-nine oh four, South Thirty-Sixth Street.
Let's pray together. God, we take a moment to pause and just ask for your wisdom for the business matters tonight. These are important issues, and we thank you for the business of government. We acknowledge that you have ordained marriage and the church and also government, and you've declared that it's good, and you've commanded us to pray for our elected officials, to support them, to honor them. And so tonight, I just pray for all these leaders around me and in front of me, that you would grant them faith to depend upon your wisdom and guidance, that you'd grant them great wisdom as they make tough decisions, help them discern between the good and the best. Lord, I pray to grant them courage to step out in new ways and see the future for our great city. Lord, I pray you'd grant them bravery as well, Lord, and you would grant them protection from naysayers and from those who want to divide and play partisan politics. Lord, I pray you would protect them and their families. And so guide the issues at hand tonight, Lord. We ask all of this in the name of the Savior, your greatest gift. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Holdaway. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilman Casey?
Here.
Councilman Cook?
Here.
Councilman McCaw?
Here.
Councilman Preister?
Here.
Councilman Burns?
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims, and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda. Motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Do you vote yes or no?
It's still circle.
Okay. Oh, there it came. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an ask risk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Preister. Any comments or questions?
Yes.
Please vote.
Okay, I'm gonna just take roll call. Councilman Casey?
Yes.
Councilman Cook?
Yes.
Councilman McCaw?
Yes.
Councilman Preister?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And item seven, special presentations. We've got three of them tonight, and it looks like there's quite a few here to receive these. So I'm gonna start. Seven A, proclamation declaring April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, as Earth Day in Bellevue. Can I see, raise a hands who's here with Earth Day? Okay, actually, I'm gonna come out to the podium and read. If you guys just wanna come up and stand right behind me while I'm reading it, and I'll present it to you afterwards. Okay, we have Earth Day proclamation, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, is the fifty-third anniversary of Earth Day, a time marked by massive coast-to-coast rallies, and an estimated twenty-two million Americans took to the streets, parks, and auditoriums to urge America to come together and clean up its air and water systems. Despite the event's amazing success and resulting decades of environmental progress, momentous challenges remain before us. And whereas today, the United Nations and our governmental panel on climate change is calling for an acceleration agenda to speed up global actions on climate change mitigation, climate action is needed now more than ever, especially by the heaviest polluting countries, to ensure the future of generations to come. And whereas, our efforts can benefit society in countless ways, from improving air quality to enhancing ecosystems to boosting public health. We have many options, including recycling, composting, supporting farmers' markets, planting trees, and pollinator and insect-friendly gardens, driving electric and hybrid vehicles, investing in solar energy. And whereas, on this observance of Earth Day as your mayor, I ask that you join me in the pledge to educate ourselves and others on the pressing environmental issues, and work together within our communities to generate, advocate, and support the implementation of new ways of living to ensure a sustainable future. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Rusty Hike, have the distinct honor of proclaiming April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, Earth Day in Bellevue, Nebraska.
Let's do a picture first, then you're gonna speak.
Alright, let's squeeze him. Perfect. Alright, look at me. They gotta have, there you go, right there.
Can I just get a quick, which organization you're with?
Just everybody announce their name real quick.
Tyler Moore.
Ruth Reister.
I'm Richard.
Taylor Tolbert.
So I'm like a big.
Deborah Moore, check, and we're a tree boy.
And Scott Treeboy also.
And.
Don Price.
Thank you for everything you did. I've got another proclamation. I think some of you are gonna stand up here for that as well. Maybe all of you. So seven B, proclamation declaring April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, as Arbor Day in Bellevue. So Arbor Day proclamation, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas, in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And whereas, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil, by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, being a, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Rusty Hike, do hereby proclaim April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, as Arbor Day in the city of Bellevue, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. I'll stay up here for one more presentation. Seven C, proclamation declaring April twenty-third through twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, as National Library Week in Bellevue, Nebraska. And Julie is here. So you can just stand right here. City of Bellevue, Nebraska, Office of the Mayor, National Library Week, two thousand twenty-three proclamation. Whereas, libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. Whereas, libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, and social economic status. Whereas, libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. Whereas, libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs to their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships. Whereas, libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. Whereas, libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas, libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas, libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Rusty Hike, proclaim National Library Week, April twenty-third through twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library to explore the wealth of resources available.
I don't wanna take up too much more of your time, the mayor. We wanna thank you for the proclamation.
Much time as you want.
But I did distribute to you, we have a special program this year in combination with some of the other Sarpy County libraries, and it's called A Passport to Your Library. So anyone who comes into our libraries, Lovista couldn't quite get it together this year, they're not participating, but we do other things with them. But this is a neat program between us, Gretna, Papillion, and Springfield. You can get one of these little passports at any of our libraries, and for each library that you visit, you're gonna get stamped. And then, if you get all four of them stamped, you return it to your home library, and that goes into a prize that you can win. So it's a good way. We just wanna encourage our population, our public, to come and visit us during this week. I gave you copies of all our calendars. You can see they're chock full of activities. This one just relates to some of the activities our children's department is doing for this special week, and we thank them because they put a lot of work into getting this together. But I will also mention, before I leave, this isn't in our National Library Week, but as another joint project with the Sarpy County Libraries, we are bringing national bestselling author Alex Kava to the Papillion Landing for a free program on May eleventh. Anyone can come. So, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. And I wanna give everybody else the opportunity to speak regarding the proclamations. If anybody wants to talk, just announce your name and which group you're with.
Hello, my name is Taylora Tolbert, and I'm a part of Green Initiative and a freshman at Bellevue East High School. Thank you for supporting Earth Day and Arbor Day with a proclamation reading this year. The earth is important to us all. We are all alive because of the resources it provides for us. I care for the earth and treat it with respect because it gives us all that we need. I have a garden at my house, and I actively attempt to do my part for the community, like picking up trash when I see it, because the earth doesn't deserve our waste. People don't wanna believe the real problems going on because it scares them. Well, you know what? It is scary, and that is why we have to act now or else we won't have anything left to act on. We are entering our sixth mass extinction, and we have killed over six hundred and eighty species, three hundred and eighteen of them due to pollution and climate change caused by humans. At the rate we are going, we won't have much more time. We can each do our part to give us more time to heal our crying planet. So let's make today the day for change. I will be breaking down three global issues: pollution, climate change, and plastic, and ways that we can help solve them. We may not be able to completely solve the problem, but it's a start. All of us in our city can help improve our environment and our earth. The first point that is something we can easily impact is pollution caused by trash blowing out of trash cans and people littering. There is so much of it, and it never ends, so everyone just lets it go. So what can we do? I'd like to suggest that instead of giving out speeding and traffic tickets, the city could bring back community services punishment. Another way we could help impact trash pollution issues in Bellevue is by having litter cleanup with the city cleanup twice a year. This would not only promote the idea of cleaning the city, but it would also bring the community together to do it. The air pollution is also a detrimental issue. We need to plant more trees and grow more plants, maybe with the community gardens. The more we give to the earth, the more it gives back to us. The more trees we plant, the more oxygen it gives to us. The more plants we grow, the cleaner our air is. Plants protect us and kill bacteria, so why aren't we planting more, especially after a pandemic? We could have walking areas full of trees and plants. Walking helps the carbon issues we have, which is connected to my second point on climate change. Climate change is not only an issue in our community but globally. Even though we cannot completely solve climate change, we can always be the start of something big. First, we can add solar charged bicycles around the city. These would provide a safer way to travel by not emitting toxins into the air and decreasing the carbon footprint. Working with solar panel companies to provide cheaper options will give the people the incentive to buy safer panels that are beneficial to our environment. Another solution our city could provide is more sidewalks for walking. This would help decrease our carbon footprint. The city could have a community garden where they also offer classes to help keep it, remain sustainable and healthy. This would have a trail to encourage walking and see the biodiversity up close. Plants purify the air. So the more we move, the plant, the more we plant, the healthier our environment is, because all humans need air to survive. Our environment needs to stay healthy, but so do we. This leads to my third and final concern, the plastic pollution. Did you know that every human consumes about a credit card of plastic every day? This is due to the amount of plastic that's in the air we breathe. Now, plants could help this, but so could decreasing the amount of plastic and unrecyclable plastic that is used. Many of the plastic used is thrown away or cannot be recycled, leading to it being burnt and put into the air, the air that we breathe. Microplastics are just floating around, and we are inhaling it. Why is it that our school doesn't offer better recycling options? The city may not be able to change the way the school runs, but they can help the schools by providing more recycling options that schools can take advantage of. Many teachers have told me that they would recycle, but the school has no place for it to go. But even if we start to recycle more, that won't drastically fix the problem. Only seventeen percent of plastic is recycled. Seventeen percent. That means ninety-three percent of plastic goes into the air. That is killing us. The city could encourage people to recycle more by paying people for using their own bags when shopping, for instance. And this doesn't have to be a lot, just a few cents for each time they use their own shopping bag. And this money could come from a small charge to use a plastic bag. In conclusion, there are many ways that each of us can help improve our environment. It would be useless to just name this problem and say they're bad when there are many solutions that we can act on to help. It starts with each of us. If everyone believes that another will do what they are supposed to be doing, then it will never get done. Everyone should give the earth a hundred percent. There is only one earth. We need the earth to survive, and originally, it didn't need us to, but after the damage that humans have done, the earth really needs us. If we don't take care of the earth, it will be our own ending. We need to protect it and stop using its resources to create a toxic environment. I found a quote written by Dr. Seuss from the movie called The Lorax, and it says, "Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better." It's not. You have to be the person to care and stand up for the earth, or else there won't be an earth left to care for. Thank you.
Thank you. Keep that education going, that passion going, and thank you for educating us a little bit more. If there's anyone else from either group that wants to talk, feel free to come up.
Thank you. I'm Tyler Moore. I'm the current president of Green Bellevue. I'm also a biology professor and scientist here. It is a great time to be living on the greatest planet in our solar system. We've got a lot of environmental problems that we can solve. Science has given us the best understanding we've ever had of the natural world. We currently know more about species, from the tiniest little bacteria to the largest whales and elephants than we ever have before. We have passionate people all over the globe that care more than we maybe ever have about the natural world. And locally, we have so many great projects going on. Mayor Hike helped lead into the B-City USA initiative of Bellevue, and where we are really promoting native habitat within our city, which is an aesthetic benefit, as well as a benefit to insects, which are pushing up the food chain. We have a lot of benefits going on with collaborations with the local high schools and zero waste. We have energy-saving and clean energy programs that are ongoing right now as well. And a lot of this is really driven by all of our high school and middle school and college-based students who are really engaged in our programs, as well as volunteers who are adults. So I really wanna thank everybody for doing that. And if you wanna get involved in any of this, feel free to look more into Green Bellevue and get in contact with any of us. And I won't take any more of your time, but thank you very much.
Thank you. And once again, thank you for all you do, because it makes a difference. Is there anyone else that wants to come up? Alright, well, thanks for coming out in force tonight. Okay, we'll move to item eight, organizational matters. We have none this evening. Nine approved citizen communications. We did not receive any. Item ten, liquor licenses. Ten A, recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of the application for Joshua R. Irish as the new manager for Sickies, North Dakota Inc., doing business as Sickies Garage Burgers and Brews at twelve oh three Cornhusker Road. And I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here by chance? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak regarding ten A? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Same as that to Casey. Thanks, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of the application for Joshua R. Irish as a new manager of Sickies N.D. Incorporated, doing business as Sickies Garage Burgers and Brews at twelve oh three Cornhusker Road, Bellevue.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Oh, sorry. Motion by Casey, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Thank, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item ten B, recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of the application for Switchgear Enterprises LLC, doing business as the alley for a class I liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits. On sale only at six oh one Chateau Drive, Bellevue. Stephen M. Kucherik as the manager. And I'll open it up for public hearing, and I see Steve is at the podium. I wanna just, I wanna thank Steve. Known Steve for a little while, and he is the one in charge of opening up, reopening the old Leopard Lanes bowling alley. So that's a huge addition, bringing, coming back to Bellevue. So I wanna thank him for his commitment. That's not an easy task, young man, and he's putting it all on the line, and we appreciate it. Steve?
Well, thank you all for having me here. I'm Steve Kucherik Jr. Before I begin, I just wanted to say thank you for the declarations for Arbor Day and Earth Day, and all of the young speakers that we had. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I think Arbor Day originated in Nebraska, so that's just another reason why there is no place like Nebraska. And it's fantastic to have the young speakers here who are passionate at that age. I hope that continues on. I really do love this community. I love the state of Nebraska, Husker Athletics, and really hoping and praying this year is gonna be a good year for some football and volleyball. So as I said, my name is Stephen Michael Kucherik Jr. I'm the younger, smarter, better version, better-looking version of my father, Steve Senior. He's probably gonna watch this, so don't need to tell him that. And I am the sole one-hundred percent veteran owner of Switchgear Entertainment LLC. The company was formed last year. We own the commercial property at six oh one Chateau Drive in Bellevue, which is the old Leopard Lanes. And it is my intention and currently working actively to reopen Leopard Lanes as the alley, as a bowling alley, and not just a bowling alley, but as a affordable family entertainment center with bowling, axe-throwing, party rooms, a private party area. I've been asked this a number of times, fully refurbished and rebuilt bathrooms that look a lot nicer than they used to. And with that, I yield the floor back to you, and I welcome any questions about not only myself, but also the alley.
Thanks for coming out, Steve. Any questions for Steve? Councilman Preister?
Just another congratulations. Thank you for your words here, and thank you for investing in the city and the community in a wonderful recreational outlet. And the last thank you is, sometimes when we get the applications for liquor licenses, the applicant doesn't even bother to show up. If there are questions, I think it's important, once they've been invited, that they have enough respect, that they do show up to answer those questions. You were so kind and respectful, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Steve. Alright, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding ten B? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing, and and thanks, uh, thanks again for showing up, Steve.
Thank you.
Uh, do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Con- I make a motion to recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission their approval of the application for Switchgear Enterprises LLC doing business as the alley for a class I liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits on sale only at six oh one Chateau Drive, Bellevue, six eight zero zero five, and Steve M. Kucherik Junior as manager.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Welch. Seconded by. Who did? McCaw. McCaw. Uh, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item ten C recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of the application for Wild Chicken Grill Inc., doing business as Wild Chicken Grill for a class I liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits on sale only at thirty six oh four Twin Creek Drive, Bellevue. And Jose E. Pena as manager. Is, uh, the applicant here? Okay, and you don't need to come forward, but you're here for questions, so thank you for showing up.
Thank you.
Um, I will open it up for public hearing. I'll open, uh, ten C up for public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding the liquor applications? Please come forward. Okay, any questions for the applicant from the council? Councilman Cook?
Just wanna make one comment. Mr. Pena, thanks for opening up a restaurant. I read the information that you gave us. It sounds like it's gonna be an upscale type of restaurant, and thank you for bringing it to Bellevue.
Please come to the podium so we can, you're being recorded.
I'd say, um, you know, we moved from, uh, Mexico, me and my family, uh, fifteen years ago, we've been in Bellevue, and we love the area. And, you know, we wanted to open a restaurant so where we can bring some of, some of the dishes that that we can create, and we wanted to have, uh, the people from the area, um, having more options to eat, so we wanna make a place where families can come out and you know, have a good meal and enjoy time with the families. That's big for us, so.
Thank you, and if you would just sign the sheet there, so we have that for the record. Any other questions for Jose? All right, Councilman Cook?
I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval.
Oh, you know what? I haven't, uh, no, I haven't.
My fault, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Um, so the public hearing has been opened. Nobody wanted to come up again, so I will close the public hearing. And now, Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of the application for Wild Chicken Grill Inc., doing business as Wild Chicken Grill for a class I liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits on sale only at thirty six zero four Twin Creek Drive, Bellevue, six eight one two three, and Jose E. Pena as manager.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item ten D recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of the application for Dayode and Satoff LLC doing business as Dynamart for a class D liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits off sale only, twenty six oh nine Chandler Road West, Bellevue. And Faud, Faud Dayode as manager. Is the applicant in the audience?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Haig, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly, two eight zero four South Eighty-seventh Avenue. Excuse me, Omaha, Nebraska, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is a transfer of a current license. Um, and so what's before you today is is just that transfer. I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
Okay, I'm gonna officially open the public hearing. Um, council, have any questions for Mr. Kelly? Okay, thank you for coming. Anybody else want to speak regarding ten D? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing, and do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of the application for Dayode and Satoff LLC doing business as Dynamart for a class D liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits off sale only at twenty six oh nine Chandler Road West, Bellevue, six eight one four seven, and Faud dot Dayode as manager. Hopefully, I didn't butcher those names.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item ten E recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of a special designated liquor license for Papa Chuck's Corporation doing business as Papa Chuck's Bar and Grill to set up a beer garden for their first year anniversary celebration on May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three from three P M. to one A M. on May fourteenth at nine ten Fort Crook Road South. And I'll open ten E up for public hearing. Is the applicant here? Okay. Anybody wanting to speak regarding ten E? Please come forward. Anybody wanting to speak? Any questions for the applicant? Okay, I'll, uh, close the public hearing and accept a motion. Councilman Burns?
I move that we recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of a special designated liquor license for Papa Chuck's Corporation doing business as Papa Chuck's Bar and Grill to set up a beer garden for their first year anniversary celebration on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-three from three P M. to one A M. May fourteenth at nine ten Fort Crook Road South, Bellevue.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say happy anniversary. I hope it's a good celebration, and thank you for doing business in Bellevue.
Okay, anybody else? Motion by Burns, seconded by Welch. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item ten F recommendations to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the application for Tiana Z. Wallman as the new manager for Yahweh LLC, doing business as Holiday and Express and Suites at one zero eight zero four South Fifteenth Street, Bellevue, and I will open it up for public hearing. Is the applicant in? Okay. Um, anybody wanting to speak regarding ten F? Please come forward. Any questions from the council for the applicant? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, if Miss Wallman would please come up to the microphone and. As you're coming up, I'll thank you for being here. Is, in this application, it's not for the actual license, it's just you as the manager?
Correct, yes. We have a manager reception, um, Monday through Thursday. It's just, uh, beer and wine that we serve our guests.
Okay, and it's nice having the hotel here and nice that they can have that.
Yes, I'm, um, I'm from Omaha, so it's nice to come to Bellevue. I, um, excited to be a part of the community, and I work with the Director of Sales, and she's very involved with the chamber, so I'm kind of excited to tag along with her.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
And and I don't mean to embarrass you. My, my concern is sometimes we get access to information that isn't necessarily available in the public, that we can talk to you about outside of the meeting.
Correct.
But your application, were you fully disclosing all of the things on your application?
Yes, I did.
Okay. We have information that may be different than that, and we can certainly tell you about that, because I don't want to surprise you.
No, that's fine.
When we have a vote, and the vote may not go your way. I can't speak to it.
Oh, okay.
There, there is some additional information.
Good to know, okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Do you have any questions of me?
Um, is there a way, do I find that out? Do I talk to somebody?
Yes, you can come up and check with the police, and they can go over some information with you.
Okay, sounds good.
We just prefer not to do it publicly.
That's okay with me too, I guess.
But I at least wanted to be upfront with you and to let you know.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions for applicant? Okay, we have the, um, public hearing open. Is there anybody else wanting to speak regarding ten F? Please come forward. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Seeing nobody, and is there a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the denial of the application for Tiana Z. Wallman as a new manager for Yahweh LLC doing business as Holiday and Express and Suites at one zero eight zero four South Fifteenth Street, Bellevue, Nebraska for failure to disclose complete information on her application.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? All right, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you, and, um, Tiana, i- it's important to come up and talk to, um, the police and also our attorney will handle it. This is not a end-all. The Liquor Commission makes the final ruling. So if there's any issues, you just take it up with them and and they'll get it figured out. Thank you. We voted, right?
Yes.
Item eleven ordinances for adoption, third reading. Eleven A ordinance number four one one seven, and ordinance to update the compensation ordinance for seasonal employees. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one one seven, an ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range schedule, providing for publication in pamphlet form, repealing ordinance number four one one four, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Um, do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve ordinance number four one one seven.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven B ordinance number four one one eight, request to vacate the plat of lots one and two here in their addition, applicant's first city development LLC, John Jungers and the David and Ruth here, revocable trust, general location, two three zero four Lincoln Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one one eight, an ordinance to vacate the plat of lots one and two here in their addition, located at or about twenty three oh four Lincoln Road, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
Yep, I move we approve ordinance number four one one eight.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Preister. That was a tie. I'm giving it to Preister today, so.
As long as you're not picking on.
Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twelve ordinances for public hearing, second reading, twelve A ordinance number four one one nine, request to rezone lot one forty-three Nob Hill from BG to RS eighty-four for the purpose of an existing single-family residence. Applicant Chris Lake Properties LLC, general location, six zero eight Nob Hill Terrace. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Yes, ordinance number four one one nine. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number four one zero four by changing the zone classification of land located at or about six oh eight Nob Hill Terrace, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and I'll open twelve A up for public hearing. And it looks like the representative is here.
Uh, Patrick Sullivan, I am the, uh, manager for Chris Lake Properties. I'm just here to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, public hearing is open. Is there anyone here wanting to speak regarding twelve A? Please come forward. Please state your name and address.
Evelyn Aguirres, four three three four South Twenty-sixth Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one oh seven. Um, I'm here in support of, uh, my friend Mer- Merlina Menjivar. Uh, she is, she wants to purchase this land to open up a daycare. Um, and the reason I'm here to support her is, am I on the right one?
No.
Oh.
All right, anybody else wanting to speak regarding twelve A? All right, nobody raising their hand, so I'll close the public hearing. And third reading will be May second, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to ask Ms. Palm a question. I, I understand the change of zoning. It's currently non-conforming. But we have other residential properties around it. I assume the zoning is the same and they're non-conforming, or some of them are.
Correct.
Do we just wait, and as things come to us, then we change as a request, or is there any in the master plan, are we looking at this for anything besides individually doing this?
Typically, the city has not done a blanket rezoning on behalf of personal property owners. So so I would say, yes, it's up to the individual property owner. Um, we will be doing an update of the comp plan here this year, so we will amend the future land use map for those properties so that when they do come forward for zoning, it will be an even easier process.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
No more questions? Okay, um, again, that third reading will be May second, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. here in the council chambers. Item twelve B ordinance number four one two zero, request to rezone lot one D Pleasant Hill or Martin subdivision from RS seventy-two to BG for the purpose of a daycare center. Applicant Twins Daycare LLC, general location, seven nine five two South Twenty-fifth Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one two zero, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number forty one oh four by changing the classification of land located at or about seventy nine fifty-two South Twenty-fifth Street, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and I will open up twelve B for public hearing, so if, uh, anyone wants to speak regarding twelve B, now's the time to come forward.
Try this again. Um, Evelyn Aguirres, uh, four three three four South Twenty-sixth Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one oh seven, and I'm here to support my friend, uh, Merlin Menjivar on her, um, like, the purchase of this property to open up, uh, the twins, another twins daycare. And the reason I'm here is because I've known Merlin for years, and I've known her since she opened up, um, her daycare at her house. Um, she has twins, that's where the name comes from, and she decided to stay home to take care of them. And, um, then she took on some other kids, but then, um, she was successful that, um, her business got bigger, so then she, um, opened up a daycare on forty-eighth and, um, Giles, right across the street from Bryan High School, and, uh, and that also got bigger, and then, um, recently she opened up a second, uh, twins daycare on twenty-fourth and. And uh, and that also got bigger and then um, recently she opened up a second uh, twins daycare on twenty-fourth and. And um, and now that, you know, as a uh, business owner. Uh, one of the biggest dreams um, that she has is like to have her own property. And by having this lot, she is um, gonna continue the other uh, two locations, but also now she's gonna have her own property. And but adding um, you know, her, um, her dream is gonna come true um, by owning um, her property. And not only that, she's has created jobs, um, that would be her third location by creating jobs. And also uh, making an impact for those little ones. Um, I have, um, I worked for eight years for Omaha Public Schools and currently I work for a nonprofit where I work with students. Uh, fifteen to twenty-one. And um, back when I was working across the street from uh, Twins Daycare. I had was, one of my senior students, she got pregnant, had a baby, and then she didn't have a car. So um, I share that with um, Merlin, I say, hey, I have this student, I know she provides a service to pick up the little ones. But as I would, like, what about the mom? You know, she doesn't have a way to get to school and she's almost done. And um, she has a huge heart. Um, and she was like, um, she offered to bring her to school. And that student was able to graduate and finish her high school diploma. Um, and because of her and her willingness to provide that additional service that she didn't have to provide to my students. And I have heard from others of staff, for example, she serves a lot of students from Gomez Elementary. Where not only is, is it a daycare that um, just drop off your kids, but she also provides those motor skills, those. Uh, to develop those intellectual skills and some of those students are bilingual, multilingual. So this is a, a daycare that's gonna provide the um, the uh, school readiness services to. To the, the, the little ones. And not only that, like bringing that business uh, more deeper into the Bellevue area. It's gonna impact not, um, the community around it and, and it's gonna send those kids ready for school. So that's my, my sense to my friend Merlin, thank you.
Thank you for speaking for it. Yep, please sign your name and address. Now you're good. Public hearing is still open, so anybody else just wants to come up, please sign in. State your name and address.
Hola, hola. Um, I wonder if any here speaks some Spanish? Now we, we don't have a translator here. Okay, I guess I'll say it in English. So my name is Paulina Gonzalez and I, my address is two eight two six nine, two hundred and seventieth Street, Niola, Iowa. You wonder why I'm here, what's the connection with Bellevue? Well, I work in Omaha and then I also take my kids to Twins Daycare in Bellevue and in Omaha. Do you know that female Hispanic business owners are fueling the economy? Latina-owned small businesses are fastest-growing segment of the business community in the United States. Playing a key role in fueling the nation's economy. How do they do it? With perseverance, education, and a lot of guts.
Take your time.
Education is a need and as part of making sure our Bellevue. Continues to develop. A great idea is to support the construction of a daycare. This will help make sure that parents feel comfortable leaving their kids in great hands. While working and making Bellevue's economy stronger. I have my two daughters in Twins Daycare and I am amazed. On how clean and organized it is. They treat my daughters with love. Even better, they are able to put their Spanish into practice. With a new daycare in this area. We are supporting the development of newer generations able to speak both English and Spanish. Talking about the Earth Day and the environment. The design of this daycare includes a lot of green area. Do not leave behind the value this will bring to provide jobs. My question for you or to you is, is there another construction that could be? In that lot and could have more benefits than the above mentioned? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding twelve B? Please come forward. Please state your name and address and sign in.
Good evening, my name is Michael Bel Castro, uh, address eight zero zero six, South Twenty-Fifth Street. It's the property uh, that is directly south of the uh, property in question. I'd just like to start off by saying, uh, thank you everybody for your uh, commitment and service to the community. It, it doesn't go unnoticed. However, um, the issue tonight is um, um. The request to rezone the, the five acres next to my property. Um, the property in question is surrounded on three sides by residential. Um, properties, uh, mostly single-family dwellings. Unless I'm mistaken, but that's what I believe it to be. Um, the commercial rezoning um. Is, in my opinion, would be inappropriate for that piece of property. Um, and the, I, I believe the, the council should deny it, and I'll give you my reasons for that. While the applicant uh, has an argument that they would like to put a daycare there. Nothing has been, in as far as my knowledge, been requested to put a daycare there. This is to rezone that property as uh, I think it's uh, BG, which is general business or commercial property. Uh, with that being said, um, according to the uh, I'm just looking at my notes here so I get this correct. Um, that would give the uh, the, the business. Or the uh, the property owner, if it was to be rezoned. The uh, option to where they could actually put in different businesses to include like an auto parts store, a bowling alley. I know we wanna have one up at Leopard Lanes, but I don't know, uh, as far as having one right next to the school in the residential area. But uh, a tanning salon, a garage, gas station, a tavern, um, a tobacco store. All of those which would be within three hundred feet of an elementary school along with residential properties. Um, the re, uh, the rezoning uh, request is way over broad. Um, that, like I said, it would uh, open up the gate to put a property in there or a business in there that. Isn't um, in my opinion, friendly with the uh, the current zoning of the uh, the residential properties. Um, I think it would have a negative impact on the residential areas, uh, including traffic. Twenty-Fifth Street is really picking up in traffic and to have um, uh, businesses in there, in that area. Where there's a lot of kids that actually walk up and down that sidewalk. Um, the, the police department does a wonderful job at patrolling that area, but they can't be there all the time. And I've seen cars, I kid you not, probably doing seventy miles an hour down Twenty-Fifth Street. And it's only a matter of time before something terrible happens and I don't wanna see it. Uh, but increasing that traffic flow, I think would be detrimental to that area. Um, there's a lot of um, citizens in my uh, speaking with, I can't speak for them. But I've heard their opinions on it as well, um, and they're not uh, fond of something like that. You, I just don't see that, how they can come into as far as having a, um, a general business or business general, commercial property. When you're surrounded by three uh, sides of residential area. Um, for that reason, I believe that the uh, the council uh, should deny the request. Uh, thank you for your time and I will sign here.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
So are, are you and the neighbors against the BG, against the daycare, against?
No, the, uh, I'm not against the daycare. I'm against general business, commercial property right next to a residential. Because according to the way I read the ordinance, it says that you can actually. Not only have a daycare, but you can, i- it's called spot, in my, spot zoning. I'm sure everybody's heard of that, where you have one particular portion of a property that is for a daycare. And then you have another four and a half acres that's for general business, where you could have a tobacco store or, or anything like that, a car wash. And I'm worried about the traffic, I'm worried about the lighting, uh, things that actually don't um, actually uh. Make a good neighbor for residential people.
So Tammy, you know this question's coming to you. Can they, can they do that type of thing that he's referencing? Or is it, if this is, if this is recommended and approved, can they only have a daycare at this property?
If the BG zoning is approved, the city would have no control over whether or not it's simply a daycare. Um, there's, you know, approximately fifty different uses that are permitted uses within the BG zoning district. Uh, Mr. Bel Castro named a few, he's correct, and it could be a tavern, it could be a convenience store. Um, it could be um, any number of, it could be a drive-through restaurant. Um, it could be any number of uses, so once that zoning is approved, it stays with the land. So if something happens where the daycare doesn't come to fruition, or the daycare there is there ten years and then the land is sold. Again, any permitted use within that BG zoning district would be allowed. I would bring up, at the planning commission, there was discussion about whether or not a contractual zoning agreement is something the city would like. Um, I will speak for uh, the planning department, I think I also speak for administration when I say we're not interested in that. We only have a handful of those that exist in the city now, um, they're very difficult over time to enforce. And we're in a multi-year lawsuit over one of the last ones that we did. It's taken a number um, of staff time and resources to defend that in court. So um, I, from a staff standpoint, we are not interested in doing contractual zoning.
Okay, but based on our notes, planning commission and your department recommended this being approved, is that correct?
No, recommended denial.
I misread that, I apologize.
Yes, recommended denial.
Thank you.
Any, any questions for me? Uh, I tried to explain the best that I could.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address and sign in, please.
Hi, my name is Janice Stober. I'm at seventy-eight ten South Twenty-Fourth Street, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight one four seven. Um, and I spoke at the last meeting, and I don't think the question here is that, is, is everybody against a daycare? As a former OPS teacher, we know how important childcare, safety, and education is. That's not the issue, the issue is the rezoning. And that is a big concern for residents surrounding that area. For reasons that Mike stated, for reasons that were stated at the planning board or planning meeting. It's just, when you have one little area with no guarantee. And I understand businesses never have a guarantee, that they will be in existence five years from now. Then the people like myself that moved their ninety-year-old mother in with them. Really don't, we're directly across from the property, do not want to be across from. Any other type of business that would be maybe dangerous, hazardous to your health, whatever. But as, also as a former educator, I would have a huge concern anyway. About the grounds in that area after we observed everything that was hauled out. How much petroleum is in that ground, how much lead is in that ground, you're talking about putting children there. And is this something that everything is gonna be completely dug up, retreated and replaced? Those are the types of concerns I have. Part of it is the safety of the children. The proposed owner, no, I'm not questioning that what, whatsoever. I'm thinking about safety of children, but I'm also thinking about the safety of our residents. Who virtually have just a pretty quiet area to, well, most of us grow old in right now, so we're, we're enjoying it. So I'm concerned that we would have rezoned that for business and what could potentially go in there, should the daycare not survive. I'm just asking that we don't rezone. You know, put yours, and maybe put yourselves in that position. Is that something personally anyone really would desire? That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak regarding twelve B? Please come forward.
I know those left-handed people, right? Thank you. I've had my students tell me I'm writing incorrectly. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Talarico. I live at seven nine zero six Green Circle in Bellevue. My backyard um, backs up to this property and some portion of it, the corner does. We've lived in this, uh, in this home for twenty years now, we are proud to call Bellevue our home. Um, I, as well as my neighbors, am against the rezoning of this property. I have a ten-year-old son, um, he does not need to be exposed to what could come of any property that could be um, put on that. Or any, any businesses that could be put on that property. Again, I'm not against a daycare, my child went through daycare systems. I, I would, I mean, I think it's important to have, have daycares throughout our community. However, that particular area is residential, it's right next to a school. We're close enough that we can hear the children playing in the backyard of the school um, during the day. That's how close we're talking to this, to this school and the kids that are playing. This isn't just next to a school, it's next to their playground. So um, for many of these reasons and just to echo my neighbors, I would ask that we do not rezone this property.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak regarding twelve B? Please come forward.
Hi, Natalie Aguilar, my address is twenty-six thirteen South, wait, twenty-six thirteen South Ninety-second East Avenue. Tulsa, Oklahoma, seven four one two nine, you probably ask why I'm here, but I am a traveling hairstylist and I have been taking my daughter. To Twins Daycare for many years, I would not trust anybody else with my daughter and it goes beyond more than the care, the love, the food. Um, every single time I'm out here more than once a month, um. I think you guys should maybe rethink of rezoning the area, I know Marlene has worked so hard, I have seen her um, work day and night. I have seen her cried out, I have seen her cry with kids, cry with moms, and she has a very loving heart. Um, I think we are in contact more and she is um, ongoing with wanting to make the kid, her facilities a Montessori. Um, she does a lot for the community, not only for the daycare but for others. And um, sorry, I'm very nervous. Um, I think as a Hispanic owner, we more often than not get let down. Not only because we don't speak the language, but we tend to be closed-minded when on things like this. Um, but I think you guys should maybe give it a second chance or rethink it and that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wanting to speak regarding twelve B? Please come forward. Any questions from the council to any of the speakers? It, it's open, you can come forward.
Uh, my name's Tim Engler, I'm personal representative to the estate on the property. Uh, I am here to speak on the benefits we might receive from this property. Um, I understand that the property has been basically an oasis for a while and people have gotten used to that. But when we bought the property back in the seventies, we also had casual racehorses across the street. And we could watch them play and gallop and all that kinda stuff, and as progress comes about. So will this property have to he, give up to that? Now the, um, one of the concerns I heard last time was people wanna see the turkeys and the deer walk around the property. Well, that's fine if they wanna pay admission, but that's not exactly what property is really for. Uh, that is there because of deva, development from the other properties that are around that causes traffic. Uh, that is there because of del- development from the other properties that are around that causes traffic. I had, uh, just heard they called it about traffic, well, we have all the car dealerships. We have the Casey's over there, we have the Dollar General around the corner, we have the school, all of that caused traffic. But none of that was addressed. The schools addressed the traffic, to my understanding, is where they stagger classes now, so people can arrive and go at different times. Now, the benefit for having a health, or a, uh, daycare there is parents wouldn't have to worry about their child and picking them up right away, cause it would just walk across, you know, fifty feet away, get to the daycare, be safe, the parents could pick it up at their convenience. Whether they start in the afternoon, work in the evening, uh, and they don't have to make those kind of arrangements. And the child is gonna have to go somewhere for daycare, and I would think safety would be paramount that you walk across ground to get to the daycare versus walking across the street or jumping in the car and getting in the middle of the traffic and going. Uh, the concern about, uh, the rating, I understand on the basis, but that's all the city council has, that the city has, that they can be rated to raise, have a daycare. But there was no concern on this council that they approved a liquor license a block away. A liquor license is certainly more detrimental than a sc- than a daycare, I would believe. And if they're so worried about it turning into something else, then I'm assuming the developer that wants to put this daycare on is not lying to you or not misrepresenting himself. If you want to sign, afraid to sign a restricted use thing and you're under court, uh, I would assume, now, there's a lot of assuming going on here between the residents and us, that you would be able to find the ins and outs and make it a little more airtight. So where you couldn't go to sc- go to court over it, they would have to say, this is all that's there, whatever, how legalese you guys would want to use. I had several things to say, we own, like I said, we bought the property many years ago, long before it was in the city residential or city jurisdiction. Uh, we owned it over two decades before it was even annexed. So how it became R seventy-two, I have to look into, but I don't know, originally we bought it was an acreage, along with the same designation that the cashews had, okay? This is, uh, I think this is very beneficial, we heard today, uh, the president has signed a proclamation or a presidential, uh, recommendation, he's gonna bring in more funds towards daycares because there's such a lack of daycares, there's a need for them. The governor has even said during his educational thing, he's gonna concentrate on getting daycares in. I would think this would be a perfect thing, that Bellevue could say, hey, we're looking into the pro- problem, and we're gonna do this by creating this daycare facility for the, for this community. Um, it's not that far away from off it. Uh, it, it's just, just in a gen- a great location, the traffic issue I think is already there and should be addressed. Uh, even if we don't turn it into, or they don't turn it into a daycare, you still, if you put residential properties up there, uh, from my understanding, the way it's zoned right now, there could be up to twenty-five houses, you're talking another fifty, sixty cars in and out. So the traffic is, is not something that can be avoided, no matter what happens with that piece of property. This is great for safety, cause there's only one access, in and out, we won't have to worry about anybody trying to uh, go on the back fence and snatch kids or anything like that, if that's a possibility. There's all kinds of advantages to creating that here. So, and with that size of property, it would be non-neg- or not negligible, negligible about the traffic that was there in and out. I'd be an- happy to answer any questions here that I have, or you may have.
Okay, any questions for the owner? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, mayor.
Yes.
Thank you for appearing and giving us your views. We heard from one of the testifiers earlier that some cleanup has been done on the site. And there was a, a alleging of potential hazardous material, lead or can you address any cleanup or what your view may be of any potential contamination on the land?
Uh, originally that was bar- bought as farmland, and, uh, there were a few vehicles that were stored on it, but they were stored dry without fluids in it. And the city of Bellevue, for their reasons, didn't like the vehicles there, they were all antiques, old Thunderbirds. Uh, they were told to remove, and they got removed, uh, the city came in inspected. And they did not raise any issue of spillage or contamination or anything like that. Uh, they approved the cleanup and they did all that, so the speculation that there's a problem there is unfounded at the moment, and I maintain it is unfounded because it was just a few vehicles, and then when they were stored, they were stored dry, uh, all the fluids, everything drained out of it, stuff like that. Um, so that's, that's what happened, that's what went on.
Okay.
And that's been five years, no, I'm sorry, four years ago, it got cleaned up.
All right.
So those cars were there long, long before any of the concerns about it.
And I would assume that the reason the city came in, there was a complaint, and if they weren't on a hard surface, which is at, at one time you weren't in the city, but you are now, so if it's not on a approved hard surface, then that would be why you were asked to clean them up?
Uh, that, that was probably the major reason why, yes.
Okay, thank you for answering my question.
Thank you, anyone else wanting to speak regarding twelve B, please come forward?
One, one other question, I know that there was barbed wire around at least the section next to the school, cause we planted trees there with the students. And I don't know if that barbed wire is still around the property as it was ag at one time, or if that's been removed?
Uh, that barbed wire was there when we had horses there. Uh, that's been removed, the only thing that I've seen there is still the poles from the electric fence, but no electric fence.
Okay.
Uh, that's just there to kind of give a facade, because the people come over and urinate and all that kind of stuff, and we can't get the school to stop it, we can't get the city to stop it. Um, as far as residential places around there, the gentleman here is right next door to south. There's two houses on the corner, and there's a big acreage on the backside of it with horses. So there's not much residential that's gonna bother, except for the two people on the cul-de-sac that's around, that touches the, uh, southwest corner of the property. So the residential aspect of it is pretty low, three ha- four houses, counting the one with the horses. But to your concern, I will definitely look it over again, but last time, it's been a couple of years, last time I was up there, they weren't there, we took it out because, like I said, kids kick the balls up there, people go over and urinate during soccer events and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jan Frisbee, seven-nine-zero-six South Twenty-Fifth, Twenty-fourth Street, I'm sorry, Bellevue, Nebraska, six-eight-one-four-seven. I happen to live in an HOA that is directly across the street from this property. So, uh, when you're saying there's only three or four houses of residents, um, that would be affected, there's an, there's an entire white fence along Twenty-Fifth Street, our HOA is behind that. I live directly on the corner of Souter and Twenty-Fifth. I watch those kids walk to school every day. Uh, my concern is there's no sidewalk right now from the school to wherever their entrance is going to be. There's a sidewalk along our fence, which is very narrow, and the kids have a difficult time right now, just getting to the school that's across the street. My concern as a resident, or one of them, is where is the main entrance going to be to this property? That's not been discussed, and that is, I think, the traffic problem that we're really concerned about. Again, we're not against a daycare per se, but we're against the daycare right there and on that property. And then especially for it to turn into commercial property, for the reasons that have already been stated. Um, uh, the car issue or the vehicle issue. Uh, my husband and I moved in nine years ago, and there were, I would say, thirty to forty cars there, and they were stacked three high. Um, that's a concern for us as the property and what's in the land. Um, I don't know about a dry car, that's way out of my expertise, but I know that that was a concern of ours. Um, that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else wanting to speak regarding twelve B, please come forward? Real quick. Up at the podium, please.
I'm sorry, I haven't just appeared to specific, but, but what the young lady said. Uh, she, if she does live across the street where the HOA is with the white fence, the HOA sidewalk stops on her side at the end of the fence. Across the front property is a full sidewalk that's, uh, three and a half, four feet wide on property that is involved right now. So her speaking about a sidewalk that doesn't exist is beyond me. It on, it does not exist on her side of the property, her side of the street, not on the property in question's side of the street. Stacking the cars three high or three deep, that does not happen. There was about thirty cars there, thirty-five cars there, they were all Thunderbirds, they were all collected, last time any kind of addition was put there was before the two thousands, no more collecting was done, dad was done with trying to collect it, trying to make stuff. And they did sit there and they did get cleaned up, but they were not stacked three high or three deep or anything like that. Uh, that's over five acres of land there, they were parked, they were on blocks mostly. Uh, no, not on, uh, gravel or anything like that, although we were grandfathered in to do that, some of them were. Now, that's not, that's not a, uh, option at that time, but the, it really disturbs me that they make this sound out that we don't have a sidewalk, we do, and we don't have cars there, and we definitely did not stack them three high, that is just crazy, that is, I challenge anybody to give me a picture that shows that.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, may I?
Uh.
Thirty seconds.
All right. Anybody else wanting to speak? Yeah, let me give him the chance first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, my name is Vincent Moniz Senior. I live at eight-zero-four-seven Pine Arrosa Drive, Latulium, Nebraska, six-eight-zero-four-six. Uh, I just wanna say a little bit about Marilyn. She's very humble. She's a female, a very hard worker. And she, she, you know, has a lot of determination and has a big heart. Marilyn came to the United States when she was eighteen years old. From El Salvador, which is one of the smallest countries in Central America, yet the most densely populated. A stagnant economy, high levels of crime and violence and natural disaster have encouraged her to seek asylum here in the United States for a brighter future. She started daycare in her home. In two thousand fourteen, daycare LLC was created as she had twin sons. Her first one, a twin daycare center LLC was in forty-seven-eleven Child's Road here in Bellevue. Was not an easy task to have her start that, to get city approval. But she didn't give up on her dream of operating a large daycare center. Her second, uh, daycare center is in, um, twenty-four-zero-two N Street in Omaha, Nebraska. And by the way, the one in Bel- in Bellevue is a hundred children. And the one in, uh, Omaha is three hundred. What she's trying to do here is create a strictly daycare and preschool facility only, that's all she has in mind. I know other gentlemen and ladies have been coming up here and saying that she wants a car wash, gas station, drive-through restaurant, well, that's not her business. Her business is daycare, providing a place where you can take your children, and we're gonna have children. There, there's non-stopping here, you know, I, I have gentlemen, uh, talking about wildlife. Well, we're in the city. We have talk, uh, talking about traffic, well, uh, as, as city is, Bellevue grows, we're gonna have traffic. I think that's a good sign, that's when we get our engineers out here and say, hey, we got a problem with, uh, traffic, let's alleviate that. And also, I, I, there was mention about, well, where is, where are the driveways gonna be, where the entrances and exits are gonna be to this, uh, five acres, which is a, a lot of land. And, and she would use every little square inch of that, of the land. She's willing to call, collaborate and work closely with the city of Bellevue's, uh, structure, site and logistics of the facility. As everybody mentions, and have you been on TV or the media? Where, one of the things is childcare in the United States is a huge problem, and Bellevue and Nebraska are not immune from this problem. I feel that we should find a resolution as a lot of the, um, president, the governors of, of the United States are working on, on childcare. And again, I just want to leave you with this. A lot of people who care about the lack of childcare are trying to work to fix it. Let's do something about RU.
Thank you. And is there anyone else that would like to speak that hasn't spoke yet? Please raise your hand. Anyone else that wants to speak? Okay, I'll give, I think it's Mr. Bella Castro, thirty seconds.
Mayor, if I could just make a comment while, uh, he's finishing signing up. Um, from a staff standpoint, obviously, we would support a small business owner, support a daycare use. Um, this, our recommendation of denial is not, you know, about that at all. Um, basically, the profession of planning and looking at land use is when these applications come in, we have to look at the totality of the request. Um, we have to look at all the potential uses that would go there. Um, and the planning profession as a whole is about appropriate uses in appropriate places. Um, it's, it's our belief that, um, part of the reason for denial is that this would be a spot zoning, um, which is largely singling out a small piece of land. Um, zoning it specifically for the benefit of the owner or the applicant of such property. And having that zoning be completely different from the adjacent uses. In this particular area, staff looks at the West Chandler Road corridor, and that's where we believe that the commercial zoning is appropriate. Um, I could even point out that there's a commercially-zoned vacant parcel currently at the corner Tw- Twenty-Fifth and Chandler. Um, you know, perhaps something like that would be more appropriate for a two-story commercial daycare building that's open twenty-four-seven, it would have better access. Um, and it would, it would fit better with the neighborhood, so again, I just, I, I want the applicant to realize that we are supportive of her business, we are supportive of small business owners. If the city council does deny this request, I would say that we most definitely would work with her and try to find an appropriate location for her business within the city.
Thank you, Mr. Bella Castro?
She's something of.
Okay. Anybody else, uh, wanting to speak regarding twelve B? So you know, but I'm gonna close the public hearing. And, uh, let's do a motion and do this the right way, so, you wanna do it?
I'm, I'm just.
You wanna make a motion? Then we'll get to questions and all.
It's, it's second reading only.
Oh, sorry, go ahead then, Councilman Preister.
Thank you, mayor. I, I just wanna thank everybody who came out tonight. I understand the emotion behind the supporters, and especially for a minority business, I respect and am grateful that you are supporting your friend. Uh, the location up on Chandler has been there, I was on the council when we approved that. And I'm glad we did, I've gotten no complaints, I've respected that it's been a good operation. Uh, I have friends and connections certainly in South Omaha, and I have the same understanding of the Twenty-Fourth and N Street location, very good reputation. Very good reputation. None of that is in question. But our planning and zoning doesn't allow for spot zoning. That's the issue as I'm seeing it, as I'm hearing it framed. So, should this be denied at the next council meeting? It's based on the conformity with the plan, with the neighborhood, and with the current zoning. I was also on the council when I helped to initiate a separate agreement that only allowed a property to be used in a certain way, which was also suggested. I now regret that because of the litigation, because of the cost, because of the staff time. I agree with the administration. That's not a good option. And the spot zoning is not a good option. But I appreciate Ms. Palm saying that she's willing to work on other locations in the area. And particularly with the one right on twenty-fifth, that might be an option to purchase that up on Chandler. So, I think the framing of the issue is pretty clear from the Planning Commission and the Planning Department. So, thank you, Ms. Palm, for that information. And thank you all for coming out and expressing your opinion. Government works when the people work it, and you're here as a good example of that on both sides of the issue. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And uh, you know, I would second what, what Ms. uh, Councilman Preister just said. Um, would it be a great place for daycare? Yeah, I think it'd be absolutely a great place for a daycare next to the school and everything, but again, the zoning is an issue. Um, Tammy, I think you could even put a car wash on BG if that's the case. Um, and I, I tell you, if uh, if somebody buys it for a certain use, there's nothing to say they can't turn around and o- offer it to one of these car washes in town that are looking for a place for a lot of money. So, um, that's why that zoning's there. Um, so, I'll just leave it, leave it at that. Anything else? Okay. Public hearing has been closed. Third reading will be May second, two thousand twenty-three at six PM. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen A, request for site plan approval for Lot One, Harville Center Replat Two. Being a replating of lots one and three, Harville Center, together with vacated Harville Circle, lying within said Harville Center. Lots one and two. Harville Center Replat One, Lot Two. Bellevue Crossing Replat Two. Tax Lot Six A one zero. Tax Lot Nine A three A and Tax Lot Nine A three B, all located in the southwest quarter of Section Twenty-six Township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth PM. Sarpy County, Nebraska, for the purpose of an athletic field applicant Bellevue University. Location twenty-one oh eight Harville Circle. And I will open up fourteen A for public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak regarding fourteen A? Please come forward. Actually, I'm gonna open up. Okay, I'm gonna open up fourteen A, fourteen A one and fourteen A two for the public hearing. So if you wanna speak on regarding any of those, please feel free to do that. Fourteen A one is a request to approve the preliminary plat of Lot One Har- Harville Center Replat Two, and fourteen A two is a request to approve the final plat of Lot One Harville Center Replat Two.
Good evening. I'm Trevor Vesgrana with TD two ten eight three six Old Mill Road. Uh, we're the civil engineers on the project. I'm here with Scott Altec with Bellevue University. Uh, we're seeking your approval for the site plan review, preliminary plat, and final plat of Harville Center Replat Two. Um, just a quick overview of the project. Uh, we're proposing a new athletic fieldhouse building. Um, that'll provide the university with um, new competition courts, practice gyms, uh, training facilities, and athletic offices. Um, also on the site, we're proposing a new pedestrian plaza, uh, two onsite parking lots. And then we uh, plan to use the uh, admin services building to the southeast for the overflow parking during high-capacity events. Um, we did have a traffic study performed for the site just to ensure there are no negative impacts. Um, the study also provided some event management recommendations um, for those high-capacity events, and, and the university agrees with and doesn't have any problem following. Um, if there are any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Trevor?
One item too, if I could piggyback on that. So, uh, staff did request the traffic impact study. Bellevue University did get that. They've been very supportive of it. Um, for the most part, uh, most of the recommendations were incorporated into the site plan that you have in front of you folks. Um, there was also another item indicated in the traffic impact study. There, there may be some very hall of, high-volume events where um, traffic control will also have to be handled by not only Bellevue University staff, but also Bellevue Police Department because um, Herman Drive is a public right-of-way. So, um, if the city council approves the site plan, I would request that it be approved contingent upon a memorandum of understanding um, being entered into with the city of Bellevue prior to issuance of the building permit. Um, it was discussed at Planning Commission. Again, Bellevue University has been very supportive. Dr. Mary Hawkins has been very supportive, and they are agreeable to that. We just wanna make sure that there is something in writing um, between the city, particularly BPD and um, Bellevue University for those high-traffic events.
Thank you. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm glad that uh, Ms. Palm uh, addressed that traffic issue. That was gonna be one thing. The other thing I would ask, it appears that because of the terrain, you've gotta do mitigation for the stormwater runoff. Looks like about three ponds or areas you're doing that.
Correct, yeah.
And then it appears to be a trail that winds through them. Is that just a public walking trail then that you have there biking and students' access?
Yeah, that, that trail will go all the way down to uh, Fort Crook in Harville. Um, it'll go into the right-of-way, so it's a, it'll be a public, anyone can use that. Um, and it provides access from the su- uh, to the site from the north as well.
And those will be swales, rain garden-type catch ponds?
Yes.
That will hold rain, but will allow it to leach down and escape, so it's not running off and eroding?
Yep, correct. Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice looking and be a nice addition to the university campus.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, there's been a lot of discussion about the brick houses on those properties. Um, I take it they're going to be removed or taken care of or?
I believe so, Scott. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe they'll, they'll, in the process of being removed.
Yep.
Uh, state, state your name and address, please, for the-
Scott Altec, three two seven four seven Hickory Road, Mendon, Iowa. Uh, yes, those houses uh, are currently vacated. Uh, the, actually, the police department, we've been entering into partnerships with them. They've been using them for training. Uh, not only Bellevue, uh, uh, their tactical teams have been using them for training, but also the Metropolitan uh, uh, Canines have been coming down and training in the buildings. Uh, so we're getting the maximum use out of them right now. Uh, they're scheduled, hopefully, we'll be putting in a demo permit here to come down maybe next week or the week after. Uh, we've been making sure that when they do the training that we keep them intact and they can be locked up so they don't become uh, nuisances on campus, but uh, they've pretty much run their course and it's time for them to go.
Well, and as you know, there's a lot of rumors that there's tunnels and, you know, all kinds of crazy stuff that's going on. So that was, that question was typically just for the, the public to know what's, what's going to happen on that.
I can tell you, we've not found a tunnel yet.
And it's called progress. So, and we're happy to be working with the university. They do a great job for our city.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor.
For Councilman Preister?
Scott, I just wanna say thank you. You do a great job taking care of the buildings and the grounds and the campus. And it looks good and it's an inviting place. I think this will kind of open up that front door a little bit. And I think it'll be a real appealing area, but mainly, I just wanted to thank you for doing a good job.
Thank you, yeah. The hillside that you were asking about earlier, that trail, I think will be uh, will be really something that's to be a, a real jewel for that corner, cuz that will be an open prairie. Uh, and all of, and the winding trails for walking, and will connect with Fort Crook, and eventually, when the Fort Crook plan comes in place, that will give access to uh, to the plans for Fort Crook to, to come up to the campus, and will uh, give actually that trail will be will be at a grade that will make it ADA accessible. So that's probably the only way that we could have access from that side of the campus up to the top of the hill to the fieldhouse.
Good. And that would be a good place if you had a bicycle rental station on campus that the bicyclists who are from other countries and commute to the campus would have a place to rent some bikes.
Yes, sir. We may have to look at that. Just saying. We've had those conversations.
All right, uh, thank you. The uh, public hearing is still open. Um, is there anyone else that wants to speak regarding fourteen A, fourteen A one, or fourteen A two? Please come forward. Any final questions from the council to anybody that spoke? All right, I'll close the public hearing on all three of those items, and we'll take these one at a time, right? So, I'll entertain a motion on fourteen A. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm honored to um, make the motion that we approve item fourteen A.
Okay, with the memorandum of understanding that um, Tammy was talking about.
Yes, with the memorandum of understanding that Ms. Palm talked about earlier.
Would you repeat that memorandum for the record, Ms. Palm?
Yes, it would be a memorandum of understanding for traffic control between the city and Bellevue University, particularly BPD and Bellevue University staff.
Good. All right. Um, so just a clarification, I had some conflicting information in my records. The HDR corridor study with the transit, does this project all line up with that?
Yes, it does. Um, Doug Bassan, a consultant for HDR, did submit um, a letter comparing the Fort Crook Road study that was done for the city last year, and also the Bellevue University Master Plan that um, has been recently undergoing, and that is part of the public record, part of the city council packet, but yes, in his opinion, he's the author of both of those documents. This does align with the city's Fort Crook Road redevelopment plan.
Okay, so we're in compliance there. We shouldn't run into any issues.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion by Welch, seconded by Preister, please vote on fourteen A.
Councilman Casey, do you just wanna vote verbally? Oh, wait, it might be coming.
I think it's coming now. I refreshed.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fourteen A one, request to approve the preliminary plat of Lot One Harville Center Replat Two. We already had a public hearing. Is there a motion on Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve item fourteen A one.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fourteen A two, request to approve the final plat of Lot One Harville Center Replat Two. Again, we have the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Burns?
I move that we approve item fourteen A two.
Second. Motion by Burns, seconded by Preister. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fourteen B, request for a conditional use permit for Lot One First Presbyterian Church of Bellevue for the purpose of a one hundred and sixty-five sure that means to be foot, monopole tower. Applicant, new singular wireless PCS LLS. General location, twelve twenty Bellevue Boulevard South. And do I have a? Does anybody wanna open up a public hearing? I think there was a request, wasn't there, by the applicant?
I think at the last, yeah, but I think we were doing that just as a, a precautionary measure to open up the matter for a public hearing, just to make an, a motion for the record. To give the applicant uh, an opportunity to respond to the council's request at the last um, meeting when this was on the item or on the agenda.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to open this up for a public hearing so we can have discussion. Second.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Casey, to open up for public hearing. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Has been open, open for public hearings, been approved for fourteen B. And uh, state your name and address and sign in.
Good evening. Steve Ward, Fifteen Park Place, Swansea, Illinois. Um, here tonight representing AT&amp;T in this request. At this time, I'd like to ask the council to consider a table of this request while we continue our review of other options. We've also spoken with Ms. Palm and are agreeable to entering into a tolling agreement, so the city does not get caught up into any kind of a shot clock issue with the FCC.
Okay.
Mr. Ward, were you requesting a continuance of four months?
At this time, once, if we get resolution any faster, I'll let you know.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Ward from the council? Councilwoman Welch?
I, I just have a question for um, our legal department. Um, are we going to run into any issues with this hundred and fifty days? The concern that we have with the time clock moving? Anything with regards to, is there any legal issues that you see with, with regards to what Mr. Ward has proposed?
Uh, no, I don't see any. Um, if the city council would like to enter into a tolling agreement with the applicant, that certainly can be done. Um, Ms. Matthews had looked at that very issue uh, prior to this meeting and located for us the Federal Communications Commission Regulation or ruling that allows a city and an applicant to enter into an agreement by mutual consent, known as a tolling agreement that would um, where the parties would agree to extend that deadline.
So then, is there a deadline that is placed on? I mean, or is it, we say four months from today, or how does that work?
In my discussions with Mr. Ward, um, he indicated it's probably going to take him about three months to further vet his options. So, we had discussed a four-month continuance, bringing it back to a specific date in front of city council. Um, that will afford him the opportunity to finish doing what the city council has asked him to do.
Okay. And that doesn't, again, I just wanna make sure I'm clear, it does not affect our hundred and fifty-day decision-making because of the agreement both parties have entered into.
Well, we, it, that is one step after the, uh, an agreement that the council would have to approve, and so i- if there is a motion um, by the council this evening to grant the continuance, then uh, legal would work with AT&amp;T and its council to develop a tolling agreement and present that to the council at the next meeting um, to specify a date certain by which action needs to be taken by the city on the application. Perfect, thank you.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I appreciate the legal counsel. Procedurally, that was my concern. If we're going to do the amendment, the tone, well, however it's pronounced, new language to me. Amendment, do we do that before we lay it over, or I, I, I'm, do we do it together? Or I I I'm, do we do it together at the same time, just procedurally? How do we make a motion to lay it over and to ensure that we have that so we don't run afoul of the federal law?
Um, thank you for your question. I would recommend uh that if the council is willing to continue the matter, that that a motion be made um to table the matter for the next meeting, which would be the May second meeting, at which time um the council can consider a written agreement for this continuance and that will memorialize that. Um, the May second meeting will be within that one-hundred-and-fifty-day timeframe that the parties are working on. So there would, will not be any expiration of a deadline um i- if we can get an agreement before the council at the next meeting on May second.
Okay, good. That's helpful. Thank-
And and we're, and we're well within that hundred-and-fifty-day time period now. So it's not like we're at a hundred-and-forty-five days and I'm asking to continue this, so we're, we're, we're fine on time.
Are you acceptable to what we just heard to?
Steve, are you acceptable for, on behalf of your client then, to do this layover just to the next meeting? And then in the meantime, sign the agreement so we have that?
Sure, or or come to an agreement. I mean, I have to deal with AT&amp;T attorneys and all that.
Right.
We can, we can set that date as of May second, that the agreement would take place and then get, make sure it gets signed by all the parties.
Okay, good.
We're agreeable.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Casey?
Question, uh, Mr. Ward, you're still standing, and I, and I think that dead, dead, deadline date under the hundred-and-fifty days is May the fourteenth, I believe, so I, I agree, we're well within that. Can you talk a little bit about the, the need for a continuation of this matter?
Um, council has asked on two separate occasions for us to review options. And we've had options, both from the council and from staff, to review some options. We are in the process of that. We believe we have a candidate that meets most of our objectives, not all of our objectives. But it's premature to speak to that until I can speak to the other party regarding a lease inciting.
Thank you.
Any more questions from Mr. Ward? Okay, I have, I have a public hearing open, but it looks like we're gonna continue it. So you don't have to speak if you don't want to this evening, but I do need to ask if anybody wants to speak regarding it. Please come forward. All right, seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. And is there a council member? Councilman Preister?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to carry this over to the May second meeting and include that this will provide the opportunity to work on the tollen amendment. Anything else I should add? Okay, that's my motion.
Second. Motion by Preister, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen, resolutions, we have none this evening. Item sixteen, current business, sixteen A, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the two-thousand-twenty-two CDBG subrecipient agreement with Bellevue Junior Sports Association for the Sports Participation Assistance Program in an amount not to exceed six thousand dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen A.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amended inter-local cooperation agreement.
Mayor, I'm a little slow. Maybe I'm out of order. I was gonna ask a question on the-
Go ahead, co- uh, Councilman Preister.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just wondering, I note that Ralston and La Vista are not a part of this agreement. I'm just wondering why, if it's metro area and we're including Council Bluffs. It's probably not Germaine. I think we still should be, but just curious. I didn't see them as signators.
Okay, let's um, let's go ahead and do the mo- do you want to do the motion before that, or?
Uh, we've already voted on it, so I'm, I'm out of or- I'll just leave that out.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Andy. No, we haven't voted on this.
No, we haven't voted on it.
Oh, we haven't voted. Okay, all right.
Wait a second.
We'll go out of order, this one time.
Should we just make a motion real quick? Do, do we just?
We're good.
So this is a specific agreement that's been in place since, I believe, the nineteen-eighties, I was told. It's just a re-up of that agreement, and so the agencies that are, are on there are, are the ones that are interested in being involved in this. It's a, a HIDA grant, so I'm not sure that, uh, I'm not sure we can get those other agencies to, to get involved.
Yeah, I'm just, you think they have drug problems and that they would want to. It was just very noticeable to me that they didn't respond, but thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that they didn't respond, but yeah, they're, they're not uh in the agreement with us, so.
Okay. I'm glad we are.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else?
I'm gonna actually, I'm not sure I read the whole mo-
You didn't.
The whole deal, so. Sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amended inter-local cooperation agreement, Metro Drug Task Force Agreement for the Bellevue and Metro area. So any more questions for Andy? Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen B.
Motion by Welch, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, ma- motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the lease agreement between the city of Bellevue and the United States of America incorporating the previously approved novation agreement. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve sixteen C.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with Embraer Group Engineer for the new south lift station in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Councilman Burns?
I move we approve item sixteen D.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen E, recommendation to approve the purchase of a John Deere loader from Murphy Tractor and Equipment with a trade-in of the two-thousand-and-twelve loader backhoe in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-nine-hundred dollars. Councilman Burns?
I move we approve item sixteen E.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen F, recommendation to approve the purchase of three trailer-mounted arrow boards for the street department in an amount not to exceed eighteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eight dollars. Councilman Burns?
I am, I move that we approve item sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen G, recommendation to approve the purchase of a Craftco SS-two-fifty-D melter equipped with a fuel pressure gauge in an amount not to exceed fifty-one-thousand-fourty-one dollars and fifty cents. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve sixteen G.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Cook, Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to make a quick comment. I hope our Public Works Director doesn't think we're gonna put sirens and lights on these pieces of equipment.
Any other comments? Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen H, approve and authorize the mayor to sign Amendment Number One to the original agreement with HGM Associates, Inc. for eighty-twenty, eighty-two-fifty-two Cedar Island Road, Public Works Oderent Building Renovation Project in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion that we approve item sixteen H.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen I, approve and authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement for a site located at forty-four-oh-one Giles Road to address immediate, short-term facility and staffing needs in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand dollars. And that's twelve thousand dollars annually, right?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve sixteen I.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I, uh, at first, I thought we were doing this with Sarpy County, but it appears it's a private individual. So is Sarpy just renting it now, 'cause they're using it? Uh, Mark, could you?
Yeah, Sarpy, Sarpy's gonna vacate it, which then makes it open for us to lease it. So we're, they're gonna leave and we're gonna move in.
I think it's a great idea and we can certainly use it. I just, so it's owned privately. The county's just been renting it all this time?
Yeah, they've been leasing it the whole time, so.
Wow, okay. And then-
It's the same use essentially. We're gonna use it for pretty much the same thing that they were using it for, so.
Yeah, it's a nice yard and then it's got the building on it and it's right on Giles there, so it's good access. Okay. It w- that was basically her setting the price then. We didn't really have much negotiating on that.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Motion by Cook, second by Welch on sixteen I. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen J, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with NLNL Concrete, Inc. for the CDBG Valley View Sidewalk Improvements in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-five-hundred-ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents, plus a ten percent contingency of thirteen-thousand-three-hundred-fifty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents for a total project cost of one-hundred-and-sixty, one-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and twelve cents. Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. I am really pleased to make the motion to approve sixteen J.
Second.
Motion by Prester, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Uh, comments must be limited to items on the current reports. April report will be attached to the May second meeting. No questions on the last report, correct? Um, we'll file those. No closed session. I'll take a motion to adjourn for nineteen. Councilman Burns?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Cook. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.